I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting for November 27, 2018. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Well, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving and ate a lot of turkey. And I want to say we had a good Christmas tree lighting last night. If you weren't there, it was definitely cold. The only thing we were missing was one snowflake or two. And I gave, I'm gonna have to give Dave Dirks a hard time. I didn't understand it. He doesn't come out if it's below 40 degrees. So that's pretty interesting as a weatherman. I guess he's not like the Weather Channel, huh? But if you weren't there last night, I would say that you missed the best thing of the night was the hat that Nancy wore to the event last night. If you missed that hat, it would definitely have won Best in Show. So if you don't see that, Nancy will have to, Nancy will have to wear that for you here shortly. Well, I hope everybody has a good holiday season. We do want to thank City for setting everything up last night. I mean, everybody was out in the cold all day getting set up for that, so I appreciate that. So with that, any other council comments? Okay, City Manager?
Yeah, I want to give a big thank you to our Fire Department, Hazmat Team, and Police Department. Last Tuesday, we had an incident on Interstate 81 where a tanker truck went off the interstate and went into a ravine with the railroad track where the truck landed very close to the railroad track. But they responded quickly. I was on scene probably within about 30, 45 minutes after it happened. It was a good experience to watch how all those teams worked together and what they did in order to extricate the driver who was trapped for about two hours. And just seeing those folks work together, they pulled everything off with the railroad, our Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and each other to really save that guy's life. And so watching those guys work was just a privilege to do that. Also, just like the Mayor commented, the Christmas tree lighting went off well last night. I know Nancy Marney always plays a big role in that, and we appreciate it. So we had VDP down yesterday, and they looked at several sites. They're going throughout the region, but they looked at several sites here in Bristol. And yesterday, they spent the night at the Bristol Hotel, and I think spending the night again tonight there as well. They've been very impressed with the sites they've looked at. And as long as we stay on their radar, that's the most important thing. It's that old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we've got to be that squeaky wheel for the next several years.
All right. All right, with that, we've got matters to be presented by members of the public non-agend items. I've got two people signed up. Nancy Marney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. $46,000 is the average salary. $46,000 is the average salary. This is the figure that is being put out in the various advertisements concerning the proposed casino. I'm uncomfortable with that figure because when you deal with an average, you are dealing with a vulnerable figure. And particularly in a situation like this, if you're talking an average salary, that is open to a lot of vulnerability, which I will not get into at this time. I would urge this council, in the sense of clarity and more completeness of information, to ask for a range of figures. Now, a range of figures will give you the lowest salary, it'll give you the top salary, and it will also show you the distribution of the salaries between the lowest and the highest. It's possible that this could be a categorical distribution. It doesn't have to be, but it certainly could be. You're not going to have a janitor making $46,000 a year. It doesn't work that way. And a door opener doesn't make $46,000 a year. But unfortunately, there are people who think that's what this figure means, and we know, of course, it does not. But I think if you get the range, statistically, this is very valid information, incidentally. If you get the range of salaries, then you will get the distribution, and you'll have an idea of what that range represents. Now, the second figure I would suggest you ask for and get is the median. The median salary means that half of the salaries are above the median, half of the salaries are below the median. Now, the two figures I have suggested you ask for would, in my opinion, add far more clarity to this entire situation than saying an average of $46,000. It's just like saying the average salary in Bristol, Virginia is $35,000. To use the word I omitted last time, hogwash. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the City Council. I do appreciate the opportunity y'all have given for members of the public to speak. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. Someone has just asked online concerning stopped construction of the old car wash on Gate City Highway. I believe they're asking about the new Pizza Hut. And I was wondering if anyone knows the current status of that, because the construction has slowed.
It's a matter, it's, just based on the business nature of it, we'll keep that to ourselves at the moment.
Okay, thank you. What I actually signed up for, is there currently a policy that requires damage to city streets? And if you need to answer this later, that's fine, you may need to look it up. Is there a policy that requires damage to city streets by city or utility personnel that be properly repaired within a certain period of time? It's rather common that street markings are not repainted when the streets are patched. And there's a couple of places that I'm familiar with, because I pass there regularly, where there's been a steel plate in the road for a number of months. So I was wondering if that was a period of time that those things were supposed to be repaired.
Wallace, do you have a answer?
Yeah, I think there are several steel plates that are around the city. We have been able to get to those to finalize the repairs. We've been on other projects that have taken a longer time. We haven't been able to finalize.
Is there a policy that they're supposed to be repaired within a certain period of time?
Not that I'm aware of. I can check.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda items. Item one, consider public hearing regarding parcel exchange with American Merchant. I hereby open the hearing. Staff report.
Counsel, this is in regards to American Merchant and the wastewater treatment plant that is being built through funds that were received from the Appalachian Regional Commission. The reason for this is, in order to receive the funding from the ARC, that property has to be built on public property, and that's the reason for the exchange.
All right, we got one person signed up for public comment on item one. That's Michael Pollard.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. My question is not concerning the appropriateness, but rather a matter of procedure. It's my understanding, based on the documentation, that this is a partial lot that's being exchanged. And as such, if my understanding is correct on that, then my understanding is, according to City Code, that the lot will need to be subdivided before it can be exchanged, in which case, I'm just wondering if the proper procedure is that the council votes now to do the exchange before the subdivision has been handled by the Planning Commission and then subsequently approved by the City Council.
City Code allows an administrative approval of a plat that's not creating any new lots, and we do that often, where there's just adjusting boundary lines. There's not, there are new lines, but it's all becoming, the survey, if you look at it, shows it's adding to existing property. In both cases, what the city is getting is adding to what they already have, and a property line comes out, basically vacates that line.
Okay, so instead of subdividing it and creating a new lot, you're just adjusting both property lines?
Correct.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, thank you. All right, no one else signed up for public comments? I hereby close the hearing. Next item, consider public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the city charter. Hereby open the meeting, open the hearing. Staff report.
Counsel, as we have discussed over the past several meetings, what we have presented are a summary of charter changes that are in this packet, and these are things that we've gone over, and the public hearing was advertised on November 19th and November 26th. Full text of the proposed changes was made available to the public and posted to the city website on November the 19th.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, no one's signed up for this item, so hereby close the hearing. Item three, consider public hearing regarding proposed incentive and map amendments to City Bristol, Virginia Enterprise Zone. Hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
In addition to being the CDBG coordinator, I'm the Enterprise Zone Administrator. I've been working with Sally Morgan and Kelly Miller to amend the city's enterprise zone. Having a designated enterprise zone gives Bristol the ability to stimulate business and industrial growth by means of real property investment grants, job creation grants, local incentives, particularly to access state grants that are only available to businesses that are located in the designated enterprise zone. Staff has determined that it would be beneficial to modify the existing zones just slightly to provide more opportunity for some potentially expanding businesses, and at this time, we would also like to improve upon some of the existing local incentives. I'll briefly go over the proposed changes to two of the local incentives, and then Sally can explain some of the boundary deletions and additions. Okay, so we basically are just slightly changing two of the incentives. The first one is the Building Facade Improvement Grant, and right now, local business owners or property owners can receive up to $2,500 toward facade improvements through this grant. In the past couple of years, this has not been very effective, and it seemed to us it would make a lot more sense if we increased the value of that grant to $8,000, mainly because the funds used for this are federal dollars. We use CDBG funds for it. And anything over $2,000, number one, can trigger the Davis Bacon Act. And also, we have to, again, since it's federal funds, we have to go through the Department of Historical Resources. Both of these things can make the project more expensive. So it just seemed like we could get more property owners involved in this if we raised the amount of the grant. The second one is the Job Training Grant, and this provides a grant to eligible businesses to create or retain jobs, and it pays up to $500 per employee, and this is 50% of their actual cost. The only thing missing was, we didn't seem to have a cap on that. So we proposed to put a cap on that of $15,000 for each business for each year. And that's basically the only change we're making to that grant. Are there any questions about that part? So Sally's gonna talk about the property, the additions and deletions.
I have a quick summary slide here, but I also have some maps to show you real quick. But the program guidelines limit us to the amount of acres we can have in the zone, is 640 acres, that's one square mile. So currently, we have a little bit under that. We've been wanting to add, particularly around the Beacon Road industrial area that was never in the zone, where permatile is, to be able to afford, provide them benefits from the zone for any expansion they may do. Also, one block of Piedmont, where Blackbird Bakery, that for some reason was not put in the zone. When you see the map, you can see it's just an add-on to that section. So that'd be a total addition of just over 45 acres. So obviously, we would have to delete some to be able to add that. So we really looked at the map and looked at areas that really couldn't benefit from the zone, and tried to then delete those areas. We are required to send a written letter to the property owners of any of the tracks that are being deleted, and that has been done, and we have gotten no, you know, adverse, they were notified of the public hearing, so that would leave us 638 total. Our zone is actually three different non-contiguous areas. This is what we call the east part, but you can see this is Bonham Road, Interstate, and Old Airport Road here. Handshakes. The pink area is being proposed to be added. This is mostly all permatile in here on the other side of Beacon Road, so that we have this whole area, which is zone industrial, covered in our enterprise zone, and then one small parcel at the end of Bonham Road that was not in, we'd like to put in. This is, the blue is the proposed deletion. This is the site now of Highlands Fellowship Church, but at the time we created the zone in 2014, this was still the vacant former Sprint call center. So we really wanted to put it in the zone. That's why we extended it up here, and then we took up acreage in here where really, other than the convenience store, there's really no other private sector business property in here. There's another church, and there is the Criminal Training Center, Justice Training Center, and the BVU substation. So this is the area we're proposing to delete in order to add these two areas. And then the central zone is kind of linear, but we tried, this is the whole current zone, again, is the green. The place we want to add is, this is an inset of that, is just here's the library in this side of Piedmont. It's like 40 to 50 Piedmont from Blackbird Bakery. That whole block of buildings in there, they're in the historic district now, and for some reason, we missed getting them in the zone before. So this little piece here would be added, and again, some of, the blue is mostly Norfolk Southern right away in here, and a little bit of some hilly land right here, south of Valley Street. It's really not buildable land. So again, these property owners were sent letters. And then, just for your information, we do have the west part of the zone. We're not proposing any changes. This is the Bristol Mall and the New Life Facility here, and a few other commercial properties. So that gives you the summary of the 638 and what we're proposing. Any questions?
Any questions?
Are there any kind of implications for businesses that are in enterprise zones that are being removed from enterprise zones?
I didn't hear. Can you say that again? Sorry.
Are there any kind of implications, like for businesses that are in enterprise zones that are no longer going to be enterprise zones, like that, like that gas station?
Oh, no. Current applications?
No, like, is it gonna hurt their business? Do they get anything from, they get any enterprise though?
They would not be receiving anything now. They would not be eligible, help me here, for much because of the type of jobs, not the job grant.
Yeah, this is for like expanding businesses and that kind of thing, and we were very careful for the properties that we deleted to make sure that they were not ones that would be impacted by anything new, that they could actually receive from the enterprise zone.
So that gas station there on Bonham was just, by virtue of the fact of where it was, it just, it got put into it?
Right, we wouldn't have reached out to that property, except that we were reaching out to get the Sprint property in there.
Yeah, because they have to be contiguous, and so, as you can see, they're somewhat creative sometimes drawing the lines, you know, through the businesses, and like, some of it was just vacant property, that kind of thing.
Other questions? All right, hereby close the hearing. All right, item four, consider first reading of an ordinance to exchange parcels of land with American Merchant by caption only. Staff report.
Counsel, this is in regards to the transfer of property between the city and American Merchant in order to comply with the ARC requirements for the grant that was awarded in order to construct a wastewater treatment facility at the American Merchant location in order to serve not only American Merchant, but any other business that may come in there in the future.
Okay, no one's signed up for public comments, so it's a pleasure of counsel on this item. Move to approve, caption only.
Second.
Okay, get a motion, Mr. Wingard, to approve by caption only. Second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Reading the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance to transfer surplus city property.
All right, next item five, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend the city charter by caption only. Staff report.
Counsel, as previously mentioned, we have gone over several changes to the charter, and those changes are here before you tonight. I know earlier today, we had discussions with each council member about some other changes, and I'll have those advertised and presented to council at the next meeting in order to get those changed as well. Honestly, it was an oversight on my part. I know it was mentioned previously, but we'll get those changed and submitted to the General Assembly as well.
No one's signed up for public comment? So it's a pleasure, counsel.
Move to approve, first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, get a motion, Mr. Osborne, to approve by caption only. Second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion?
I have one question, just to clarify. In Section 4.07 regarding removals, I know we mentioned that the notice and evidence shall be made public immediately after serving said notice, and then it goes in the next sentence, talk about the hearing. Doesn't say whether it's public or private. I don't know, just again, to make sure that that is not, you know, because it doesn't say it's public, which, but it doesn't give the option of it being private. Just want to make sure we clarify that. To not have the situation we had a few months ago.
I guess what we could do is add the language "public." It says "after the public hearing" is what we could do, because I think the language previously said "public" or "private." So we could add that, we can add that back in. It's not a substantial change, and we can say "after the public hearing," or "after the hearing which shall be public."
Okay. I mean, I think that's the intent of everybody. I just didn't know by having that word not in there, what, what the implication would be.
It would clear it up.
Well, I would feel better with it being in there if that's, we had to amend the motion to include the revision.
Well, if it's not considered a significant change, is that your...
That's right, it's not a significant change.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, it...
Any other discussion? Okay. All right, with that, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to request a charter change to the charter for the City of Bristol, Virginia.
All right, next item six, consider approval of resolution regarding proposed incentive map amendments to the City of Bristol, Virginia Enterprise Zone. Staff report.
Just as we explained earlier, and if we can answer any more questions, just let us know.
Okay, no one's signed up for public comment? Please read the resolution.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, supporting an application for an amendment to the city's enterprise zone and authorizing the city manager to submit the necessary amendment package. Section 1, the city council finds that whereas the City of Bristol has designated, has a designated enterprise zone that provides a combination of state and local incentives to promote economic development within Bristol, and whereas there is a current need to amend the city's existing enterprise zone to incorporate additional properties and incentives in Bristol in order to increase economic growth opportunities, and whereas a required public hearing properly advertised has been held, and whereas the proposed amendments will serve to benefit economic and industrial expansion of the City of Bristol to meet the goals and objectives of the Virginia Enterprise Zone Program, then now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia. Section 1, the city council authorizes the city manager to submit the necessary enterprise zone amendment package and sign all necessary documentation on behalf of the City of Bristol for this proposed enterprise zone amendment. Section 2, the city council authorizes the city manager to meet other program administrative and reporting requirements as defined by the Enterprise Zone Regulations throughout the life of the zone, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council held on the 27th day of November 2018.
All right, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, motion, Mr. Osborne, to approve?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnham. Any discussion?
I don't have, I just have one comment. One, I appreciate y'all going back and looking at this and trying to tweak it and make it work better. I know when we go on these business retention visits, you always mention this as possible incentive for businesses looking to expand in the city, a way to help them out. I think at some point, it'd be good for council, and probably maybe even a joint meeting with the IDA, I've said this before, to sit down and look at all of these incentives and try to figure out, one, so we understand how they work, but come up with a more overarching policy of how we utilize some of these incentives. I think would be a good thing to do at some point in the near future, so.
Any other comments?
Well, I will say, the marketing and economic development packet that the city manager's putting together, one of the things we want to make sure it's in there is, you present to any person coming in to potentially invest in the city, all the things that you provide, and one would be the enterprise zone options, and you need to be pretty clear on what those available options are. So I've been in a lot of these meetings, and I'll tell you, not just the City of Bristol, but the county, they're very confusing. So you get someone that's out of state that comes in, and they sit down, and you can't connect the dots. It's really a confusing discussion. So we want to be very clear, you know, with a lot of clarity, what, what grants are available at the state level, what's available at the local level, what the enterprise zone means, and have them laid out in a very logical manner, so nobody that's familiar with the region clearly understands what it means. So I think that's real important to kind of play on what Mr. Hartley was saying.
All right, with that, I need a counsel, motion, second. I think we had it.
We had it.
And please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item seven, consider granting final plat approval for plat 16-2018 for Whedley-Carter subdivision. Staff report.
Mayor and council members, this is a, about a 19-acre tract that's being proposed to be divided into three parcels. The Planning Commission has already... The planning commission has already met and approved the preliminary and the final, and you all's role is to basically approve and certify the final plat. The location of this property is shown here, is basically bordered by Lee Highway, Terrace Drive, and the city boundary here. Here's Lee Highway and Terrace Drive, cross, basically cross from the falls. So about two eight acre tracts approximately, and one three acre tract is what the proposal is. The zoning on it is predominantly R1, but the front part of track one is zone B3. And the applicant is the owner of the property, and just a few pictures to show you, it is undeveloped property. I think there's a vacant house that would be on track, to be track one, and this is visible from Lee Highway and is the B3 commercial zone part. This is off of Terrace Drive, really flat acreage there, track two is the three acre proposed track, and you can't really see too well from track three because it's beyond the fence line here. But the only issue that, in our review, that really came up was the fact that this street serving track three is, is private, it's not, it's maintained by the city under agreement, easement agreement, it's called Kim Drive, but it's referenced in deeds as private, either right of way or private street. And our subdivision ordinance says that no private street should be platted in a, in a subdivision. What we asked the applicant to do was to submit a variance request, and as we further researched this, we really realized this private street never was conveyed. When, when this lot was created in 1967, it references this access from this street, and of course that was outside the city at the time, and there was no dedication of public right of way here. When these tracks were divided in 2011, of course that was in the city, they were also given access to Terrace Drive here, but this was never conveyed or dedicated. So our conclusion is this is really still part of what would be track three, having 50 foot width all the way to the public access here. But I had the planning commission consider the variance request, just to make sure that we covered that, and that was approved by them, allowing track three to have access from, from, directly from Kim Drive, but this property being all the way to Terrace Drive. So this is track three, this is track two, which is fronts quite a bit, maybe 300 plus feet on Public Street Terrace Drive, and then that track one has frontage on Terrace Drive as well, and Lee Highway. So that's a little bit of a synopsis there. If you all have any questions, I think that's all I wanted to summarize.
Okay, no one signed up for public comments, so what's the pleasure of counsel?
I'd move to approve the plat approval as presented.
Okay, good motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, second, Mr. Hartley, any discussion?
We have a resolution.
I have what?
Resolution.
It's not listed.
Okay, I have to abstain from this, because this is my son-in-law and my daughter, it's his family that owns this land, and Bark is buying lot number two, so just to make everybody fully aware and be transparent, I'm going to abstain from this.
I do have one question. If, if they develop lot three, would they have to then make that private drive a public right of way?
Uh, yeah, oops, I didn't mean to turn it off.
I mean, if you subdivided that lot...
Yes, in the reasons for the variance, one of them was that lot three could not be further developed, because it would no longer have that 50 foot frontage to a pub, public street, and I know as subdivision agent or whatever, I would not allow that, because it would have to then meet the code, and that street would have to be made to public standard city street. And it, and the good thing is, it's wide enough that it could be done in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just want to address the resolution.
Yes, counsel, there is a resolution. The resolution reads, a resolution of the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, approving the final plat number 16 hyphen 2018 for the Weatherly Carter subdivision. The city council finds that whereas the subdivision plat for the Weatherly Carter subdivision has been properly submitted to the city and reviewed by city staff, and whereas the planning commission met on November 19th, 2018, and approved the preliminary plat and the final plat along with the variance to section 50 hyphen 536 K of the city subdivision ordinance, and whereas section 50 hyphen 270 requires that the plat of a subdivision be approved and certified by city council before it can be recorded. Section 50 hyphen 362 allows for variances to the subdivision ordinance to be approved by the planning commission and/or city council, now therefore be resolved by the city council of Bristol, Virginia. The council approves and certifies the final plat, parentheses, plat number 16 hyphen 2018, close parenthesis, for the Weatherly Carter subdivision as attached its exhibit aid, and approves the variance to section 50 hyphen 536 K to allow track three to be served from Kim Drive, a private street, passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on November 27th, 2018.
Do you want to restate your motion?
Yeah, let me do it. So I need to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plat subdivision as presented the resolution.
Second.
Did you second?
Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farnum. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, next item eight, receive the quarterly financial update.
Mayor and members of city council, this is the financial presentation for the quarter ended September 30th, 2018. This is un-audited, un-audited data prepared on a cash basis. As of September 30th, 2018, general fund revenues were 9.7 million, and expenditures were 12.4 million, resulting in a deficit for the quarter of $2.7 million. This is not in any way unusual for the first quarter of the fiscal year, and it's why having reserve funds at June 30th is so important. Solid waste revenues were 1.1 million, expenditures were 1.3 million, for a deficit of 218,000. In the capital projects fund, revenues were 1.4 million, expenditures were 1.6 million, resulting in a deficit of 200,000. The deficit is primarily from state revenue receivables for capital expenditures. The financial summary for the general fund, if all revenues were received equally per month, the percent collected at the end of the first quarter would be 25%. Revenue from local sources as of September 30th was at 14% of the budgeted amount. This is a reasonable percentage based on, based on the fact that our primary tax due date is December the 5th. State revenue was at 25% of the budgeted amount, federal revenue was at 24.55%, and other financing sources was, was right at 24% of, of the budgeted amount. The general fund expenditure summary, once again, if every expenditure was even throughout the year, the benchmark would be 25%. Government administration was 20, was at 21% of the budgeted amount, judicial administration was 20%, public safety was at roughly 23%, public works was at 24%, health, welfare, and social services was at about 21%. Education at September 30th was right at 30%. This is not uncommon for the first quarter of the fiscal year. For the first part of the fiscal year, the state sends primarily only the S O Q funding for the schools. The remaining state funds will begin to come in later in the year. Parks, Rec, and Cultural was at 24% of the budgeted amount, community development was at 11% of the budgeted amount, non-departmental was at 35%. This is primarily because our insurance is due all at once in early July for the entire year. Debt was at 30% due to the large debt payments paid in July, for about 1.2 million dollars. Transfers were at 15%. This is what our general fund revenue at September 30th looks like. The blue, or 51% of the revenue, is from local sources. The red is our state general fund revenue at 39%. The green is our federal revenue at 10%, and just under 1%, you can't even see it, is our other financing sources revenue. This is the breakdown of our general fund expenditures, how the city spent its money. You can see public safety at 28% of general fund expenditures, education is next at 16%, health, welfare, and social services was at 14%. Then we have public works, debt, as mentioned earlier, due to the large debt payments at the beginning of the year, 9.7%. Parks, Rec, and Cultural, government administration, then non-departmental, transfers, judicial administration, and community development. The general fund revenue report as of September 30th for the first quarter, general property taxes were at 3% of the budgeted amount, other local taxes at 24%, permits and privilege fees were at 41% due to a large permit revenue received in August of 35,000. Fines and forfeitures was at 40%, this is driven by our traffic fines, that program is in place and revenue is being received monthly. Revenue from money property was at 39% because our interest earnings in our general fund are up. Charges for services was at 26%, miscellaneous revenue at 46% driven by receipt of the B V U first, the payment from B V U in the first quarter, it's a large payment of 281,000, and it comes in all at once. Recovered costs was at roughly 76%. This is because we mainly appropriate, appropriate those monies as we receive them. State revenue, federal revenue, and other financing sources are in line for the quarter. Here's data from our target revenue report. These are potentially volatile revenues that we, that we monitor monthly for performance. Local sales and use tax had a significant positive budget variance at $144,000 above target. Consumer utility tax, tax on wheels and the cigarette tax, all had modest positive budget variances. The lodging tax had a significant positive budget variance at $122,000. Meals tax had a significant positive budget variance at 37,000, and our electric consumption, admission, and communication taxes had slight negative budget variances for the period. This is how the local sales and use tax compares to the same period for fiscal years 15, 16, 17, and 18. You can see that we are up from 17 and 18, but still down slightly from 16. You can also see that the consumer utility tax is holding steady. The cigarette tax was up compared to prior periods. Lodging taxes were up from previous years. The meals tax is up from fiscal year 18, but you can see it is down from 15, 16, and This chart right here shows how the revenue comes in monthly. 2015 is in blue, 2016 is in orange, 2017 is in gray, and 2018 is in yellow. Here's what the city's local sales and use tax looks like as it comes in as revenue. The first quarter of 1819, the current fiscal year, is shown in red, and you can see that the trend is comparable to previous years. This is what the city's lodging tax looks like as it comes in as revenue. The first quarter of 1819 is shown here in red, and is comparable to what we've, how we've received that revenue in previous years. Here is the meals tax for, for the period, it too is in line with prior years. This is what the cigarette tax looks like annually. You can see the first quarter of 2019 is in red. Here's the solid waste disposal fund summary information. Revenues of 1.1 were 20% of the budgeted amount, expenditures of 1.3 were at 24% of budgeted To further break down the solid waste disposal fund expenditures, disposal expenditures were at 22%, collection percent, I'm sorry, collection expenditures were at 19%, and debt expenditures were at 37%. We do believe the results of the 17, 18 audit will show another decrease in net position in this fund. As we consider the fund's budget going forward, we need to consider budgeting for closure, post-closure, and depreciation for, depreciation costs for the fund. The audit is set to be presented to council on December 11. Here's the city's cash balance and TAN information. We do not anticipate having to use the TAN in fiscal year 2018, 2019. The current TAN will expire December 31st of 2018, and we do not anticipate renewing it. The cash balance at September 30th, 2018 was $10.7 million, including $5 million in an investment account that had earned over $20,000 worth of interest for the first quarter of the fiscal year. For comparative purposes, September 30th, one year ago, the cash balance was 3.5 million, and at September 30th, 2016, the cash balance was 2.3 million. So clearly you can see the progress the city has made toward the reserve and cash buildup. That concludes the quarterly presentation. Thank you, counsel.
Any questions from counsel? Sorry, any questions?
Just a couple of comments, I think, very good job at the presentation, I thought. A few high points to really take away from that, the landfill, the closure. So even though we've got a nice cash buildup, I think we all need to understand there are some lingering items that the city's sitting here facing in the coming, you know, two to five years. So that, even though that 10. whatever, 7 million looks, looks good when you consider the millions of dollars that it takes to do the landfill closure, that doesn't look so good. So, so we just gotta temper what we're seeing with what's ahead of us, that's, I think that's the message, we've got some things ahead of us, we gotta really pay attention to. It's interesting to see, I think, the lodging and the meals tax up, I think, I'd want to know a little bit more what's driving that, just, I know we'll have a meeting on Thursday, finance meeting, but I think that's good news, but we really want to understand that, because that, that revenue stream needs to, you know, I've said it more than once, needs to really be understood, because we can really make a lot of forward motion if we understand what's driving those decisions and get those tax streams up, so want to understand that a little more. So, good job, and we've just got to keep the, keep the focus and keep moving in the same direction, so we're getting there. All right, with that, we want to consider two closed sessions. First one will be a legal closed session, so executive session pursuant to 2.2-3711.A7, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And also personnel, executive session pursuant to 2.2-3711.A1, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. Please have a motion by counsel.
Move that we enter into executive session for the reasons stated.
A motion, Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Second, Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Hereby adjourned.